Information for items not on the agenda. Anything from the board? Alright, anything from the public that's not on the agenda? Alright.
The Cape Cod Commission is going to hold a session tomorrow about traffic safety. No, just generally and they have interactive, interactive map. Where you can add complaints to it, not complaints. Complaints, yeah, concerns, concerns, concerns. And we already have a number for Eastham. And because they're looking for how to improve road safety and it's tomorrow at noon and I unfortunately can't attend. But if
Is it in Barnstable?
In Barnstable, but there's a Zoom available. Maybe we got an email about it.
Well, I bet if you go to the commission website, they they list their meetings in the Zoom links because I I popped in on before.
But I was glad to see them taking a peek at it because traffic safety is an issue.
You wanted to ask about the Schoolhouse Museum building, so we're going to talk about that in other business. Tonight, so yeah, it didn't make the text of the agenda, but we do plan to talk about it. Alright, we'll get to administrative matters. Draft charge for shellfish and waterways advisory committee.
I just wanted, this is bringing this back from when we discussed it, I want to say in early June. And you guys agreed that you wanted to think about it in the fall, so it's the fall now officially. So I just threw it in the packet if there's any suggestions you have, anything you want to change.
The only, I thought it was fine, the only suggestion I would have two of them is change town administrator to town manager and board of selectmen to select board.
Jamie?
I think there were two things I just kind of wanted to bring up. One was that it's currently as a seven member board. Did we want to consider starting this as maybe a five member board? Since we want to kind of encourage the success of, you know, bringing this back, you know, I think that sometimes starting with a smaller group might be a better way to get everybody on the same page. And then from there, expand. Sometimes when you have too many people can be a little difficult.
I don't see why we can't do that.
Would that make it? What would the?
The breakdown still be with two members? I would say still two commercial shell fishermen.
Two minutes, two, two members at large rather than four.
Do we want language allowing for maybe one member to be allowed to be, it doesn't require them to be an Orleans resident, but allowed to be an Orleans resident? Just because we do share grant space?
I don't know if we can.
Is it handled?
I think we did before. I think they have voting members from Orleans and they were voting them.
And it says grant holders.
Because they do have an Eastham grant.
That's true.
So maybe that needs to be the
Yeah, an Eastham grant or an Eastham
For one seat, you know, that way it doesn't become a situation where it feels
He was thinking of that only as someone who had a grant or fee, not just any Orleans resident.
Right, a grant, yes. Oh, absolutely, yeah. A grant holder from Orleans for one seat. But not required to be. You know, if the opportunity is there, great. If not, we can still put someone from Eastham in that.
Right.
Commercial.
The word may works there.
Alright, any other questions on that?
Do we know if we have people interested or?
No, because we don't even have it out. So we, once I make the changes, we'll send it to the search committee and get the word out that we're looking for it. And we do have, we just put out the shellfish constable ad in the newspaper, so that's also out right now too.
Do we need a vote on?
Yes, I'd like a motion to approve the charge for the Eastham Shellfish Advisory Committee.
I make a motion, we approve the charge for the Eastham Shellfish Advisory Committee with the changes that Jerry made and Jamie made.
Alright, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five to zero. Alright, next, I don't have a printed agenda, do you?
Oh, yeah.
Hey, water system and tank update. Do we have Ja- oh, there she is, look at that.
Jackie's up there, alright.
Welcome. Thank you, just trying to get switched over to panelists.
And while you're getting organized, we also have to sign the memorandum of understanding or contract with EverSource to
Bring the electric.
Bring the poles in.
There, it's underground, I believe, right, yeah.
Okay, I think I did it correctly. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
We can see it.
Awesome. Well, thanks everyone for your time. Just wanted to give a quick update on the water project. Most of the work this year has been at the District H site, which is thirteen fifty, I think is the new official address across from the Council on Aging. We have two contracts going on there right now, the pump station and the storage tank. So today I just have a ton of pictures on construction, kind of share with you all. First, I'll start with the well station. So that contract was three point six million. We spent about three million to date. It's close to completion. So most of this slideshow, just I have the pictures in chronological order for construction, kind of give you the timeline. So obviously first, all the clearing, it's about a thirteen hundred foot access road from Noset Road to the back of the site where we have the building. And next up, some pictures of foundation. So it's a concrete foundation. You can see all the rebar. Then pouring that from the spring. Then the building itself, that's all the concrete footing, insulation, the form work. Again, still in the spring. And it's a concrete masonry unit building, which ended up being the cheaper option and gave us the most flexibility for everything that we wanted. That's a picture on the right, and then you can see the, it's just a concrete floor, a couple of water pipes sticking up here. And then we did go with a terracotta siding just to save on cost, but still have a sturdy material. And then this allowed us to have an anti-graffiti coating as well. Most of these pictures are the non-aesthetic pictures of the site during construction, but then these are some of the interior photos. So it's a thirty by forty foot building. Essentially, on one side, we have two separate production wells that are both rated for nine hundred ten gallons per minute. So we'll have one well run at a time according to our permit. Essentially, just, we have the submersible well pumps in the well, they'll come into one side of the building. And then on the other side, we have all of our chemical storage. Leave those around twenty-two hundred gallons of chemicals stored for your just day tank usage. And then we have about a month or a couple of months worth of chemicals in our bulk storage. So you can see the tanks here, the chemical metering pumps, essentially taking the potassium hydroxide for pH control and sodium hypo for disinfection. Pumping it from the tanks over the ceiling down into, you can kind of see in the middle the pipe, and there's a static mixer in there that just mixes chemicals in and simply pumps it right out. So pretty simple. Photos just of the outside, all the different penetrations they're still working on. And then we have two different production wells, a bunch of monitoring wells around it where we're analyzing the groundwater levels and we'll keep track of them after the station goes online and how that impacts the aquifer and I think this photo is just showing you a lot of the different ripraps, stormwater controls that we put in place to prevent any ponding around these wells. Quick overview on timeline, we're still looking at December. I would say about ninety percent of the work is done, but as you saw in your packet, what's really been driving the schedule is working with EverSource and Bryson. You know, probably a four-year process, but that paperwork is the most recent paperwork they just sent us, just granting the easement on actual town property, because we already have all the conduits under the road. They just, and they, I don't know if you've seen it, but they've put the utility poles down Noset Road, so we could bring three-phase power from the high school. And now we're just waiting on them to take it from Noset Road through that conduit up to the site. And then once that's done, it's all the touch-up, electrical work, automation and control, completion, testing. And the aesthetic stuff, the hydro seating, punch list. Jumping over to the tank. So that contract was five point seven million, spent about three point five to date. Just for reference, the first contract in twenty fifteen, I think was around two point five million for the same, pretty much the same tank, different site design, but same storage and type. And I thought it was neat, this picture over here is just one of the pictures, you can see it a little bit from Fort Hill, just to give you perspective. So again, just going through a lot of the photos, twenty foot down excavation for the tank, they did concrete footing. So I like these pictures, it's just crazy to think of how much rebar really goes into it for the footing. And the pedestal itself is around thirty-five feet, kind of shown here, and they went you know, almost double that for the footing. You have the Derrick crane in the middle that they used. But all it really is is rebar and concrete, so they kind of have their form work. And they go ring by ring over, you know, the last five months. Temperature controls, special testing, brake tests on the concrete, you kind of see what they use to pour it. You can see the black, all the different rings they used and how the cleanup they have to do of the concrete to make it look aesthetically pleasing. The tank itself is a hundred thirty-five feet, but it matches the elevation of the other tank, which is a hundred twenty-seven feet, I believe, it's a little bit shorter. And then the elevation itself is a hundred seventy-nine feet, just since it's a gravity bed system. Really just all the rebar in these pictures. A lot of cool drone photos. This is our second tank, so it's, it's really for the redundancy, so we can take the other tank offline if needed, cleaning and maintenance. Extra storage for the summer. In emergencies for fires. So it's a concrete pedestal and then the steel bolt at the top, which is just welded together, you can see all the patching. And last month, they did all the X-ray testing, the vacuum testing at the cracks to make sure there were no leaks, just preliminary testing. And then they actually painted it on the ground with localized containment, just so we didn't have to worry about all the spray at the higher elevation. And a couple of weeks ago, they raised the tank, it only took them about two hours. So now you can finally see it. Another picture of the inside shaft and outside, you can see they have a lot of patching or just washing to do of the outside to make it look cleaner. That's what they've been working on the past couple of weeks, they do everything by hand. And then there's a static mixing system on the inside that's supposed to be delivered in the next week. Then they'll finish the painting and do the inside, they just did the outside on the ground, so they'll focus on the inside the next few weeks. Then November's really where they'll do all the interior work, the piping, the automation work, and then hopefully fill the tank in November on the off season, so we don't have to worry about water usage. And then from there, it's like, we have some paving around the tank, but the access road to the site is going to stay gravel, natural. And then just be some punch list items. What pictures I had?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I've snuck up there a couple of times, it's, that building is beautiful.
Do you, do you expect if we approve the easement today, that the EverSource will get it ready for December, so you can put it online?
Yes, that's the plan. They've done most of the work. They were actually supposed to come out this week. Barring some kind of emergency, but they, something must have come up because they didn't come out. But once this is signed, I can just push back on them and say, you're not waiting on us for anything, so the plan is the next few weeks, they're supposed to be here.
Right, thank you, Jamie, or Jackie. Gosh, too many Jackies and Jameys, sorry. Too many Jays, that's right. Any questions, anyone have for?
I'm just curious. Does this require ongoing maintenance? And is that, are you the vendor, or is environmental partners the vendor that would provide it?
Um, it just for operation and maintenance, yes. So the town subcontracts that out to Whitewater, they're the operator of the system. So they have a current, they've been the operator since the very beginning, so they know a lot of the history. And then we work with them as well. Part of like our contract with this design and the contractor, they put together a detailed operation and maintenance manual, things like that. And we we have in Whitewater's contract, all of the steps they need to take. So they'll do, D P requires, say like monthly maintenance testing of the tank and visual inspection. And then usually Whitewater with the town will have to sub out drone inspections, and they're remote control drones that you use every couple of years. Usually every five years, it would be like removing sediment from the inside or painting is more like ten years, but they do all of the daily visual inspection, check up the site, things like that.
Are we involved, someone from Eastham involved for oversight? Or did they just provide a report? Just to someone in you know, in one of the committees, how does that work?
Right, so Kim is in charge of the water department, so her and I oversee Whitewater and they they do provide monthly reports, daily communication, and then it's just us enforcing the contract.
Yeah, I think for now, Capital Projects is updated every month, roughly. And then at once all the capital expenditures have happened, it would really just be the Kim or someone from the town like that, say with you know, the people managing it, so.
Okay, good.
Kim is actually being promoted to the operations manager at, at the DPW, so she's right underneath the superintendent, John Roughly. She and Jackie work very well together. And when we had a lot of fields work and contract work out, out in the fields, we also had less. So the team is shrinking as we get to the final finish line, but I have to say, it's been ten years with E P G, we really don't want them to leave, so we're going to try and engage them in wastewater now, so that we get to have them around still.
The final thing I'd just add is, Bob, just prior to your time, they set new water rates this year, which was a bit of an increase, and one of the impetus for doing that is to start putting away, part of that rate was a recovery of capital costs for future capital maintenance. So you will see the water. Probably starting this year, a capital plan, a multi-year capital plan related to the water system.
Makes sense.
Alright, so we do need to do the easement, but I also did want, once we finished with that, I did want to talk a little bit about the seashore and you know, what's
Oh, yeah.
What is or isn't going to happen in the future. So maybe you could just hang around to listen to that, Jackie. I don't know if we're gonna make any decisions on it tonight, but we're going to be talking about it.
Thanks for the presentation, though, that was great.
Yeah, that was really good to see. Alright, so we need a motion to approve the easement for electric service on thirteen fifteen Noset Road. I guess, do I need to list all the property or is that, okay?
Go moved.
Second.
Alright, any discussion or questions?
Yeah, there was, there were, just one question, I'm going to vote I'm going to vote in favor of this, I'm not going to stop it up. There's one paragraph in there that says that the town has to put stuff in, which we've done. And then we turn over the ownership to to EverSource. Which is fine, but then we grant the authority to EverSource to use that equipment to potentially reach other customers. And I'm just, I'm just making this statement, we have to do this, this is, let's get it done, but that just doesn't sit well with me.
Oh, yeah, well, when we ask them to extend the system, then we have to pay for it, just like any customer would have to pay for it, but if it can be used to help other residents, Jerry, then we want to do that.
Right, we do accept that we'd like to have, I'd like to have EverSource give us something back for that, that's all. That's, that's the only reason. And that's, I've said it, I'm done, I'm ready to vote.
Alright, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five to zero.
Okay, Jake, go tell EverSource now, no stopping.
That's right, that's right. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about, we had, we brought it up earlier in the spring about the Don Road, Ocean View Drive, Cable Road and behind the lighthouse, that those areas, the park is now saying that a lot more I guess, not study, but
The permitting process kind of has to start over with reserving all of those roads, that's my understanding.
Right, for natural heritage and and that sort of thing. So would it would really increase the cost of doing it down there? I mean from what it was before, I believe it was over two million.
Yeah, we have eight customers left, and I think Jackie, remind me, I think it was like two and a half million we were estimating.
The contract, just with the contractor, was two point eight. To, to do the work, and then it would be a little bit close, say, close to three for the oversight. And then easily hundreds of thousands for the survey. That we weren't expecting.
And then there was additional work that the seashore said they wanted us to pay for all the hookups too, I believe, within that.
Well, yes, that, that was part of what they wanted. And I mean, I can't even, we can't even estimate that, because that would take, we'd have to measure.
Do they want us to pay for the hookup or pay for the?
They wanted us to, my understanding, and I checked this out twice, is they wanted us to do the permitting for each private residence. And provide the actual construction of the hookup and the connection.
Oh, I thought it was the needing to do like the site plan for
No, they wanted us to do it like a contract, like we did, I think, like we did our mandatory connectionary.
Right, but it would, just for the seashore properties, which sure, there are a lot fewer than, than the eighty, right?
No, no, they didn't want to do any separate permitting for any of the eighty properties. So any of the properties that were in their park region, they wanted us to do the
Their private residences.
I also feel like at some point there was an indication that not everyone in that area necessarily was interested in hooking up. And so, and Art at the time said that we had guaranteed, we were going to get everybody in water, everyone in Eastham water. And Jackie, I think you had mentioned that there are many systems that do not deliver water to every single person in their municipality, and that's probably more common.
We would be the only town that would do that.
We would, we would be the only town.
Well, I think at this point, we have, out of sixty-one hundred properties, we are not serving eighty. So right now, we're at ninety-nine percent. And I, and I don't want you guys to make a decision tonight. I think, you know, we can put something in writing, maybe a memo to you outlining some of the different issues. And of course, we could push back with the seashore on some of these things too. I guess what I want you, what I think we announced earlier and what we want people to understand is, at least for now, we are not moving forward with contract twenty-one. If you decide to move con, move forward with contract twenty-one or something like it, then we would have probably eighteen months to two years of permitting and then have to go out to bid again for the the work for the installation.
Be going back to town meeting probably.
No, no, I don't think so.
I don't, I don't know.
We, yeah, we don't.
I think we did, it would have to depend on what the final estimate would be.
Exactly, right, that's right. So that's where we
I'm potential looking at some alternatives to
That's what I was hoping that I could sit down and, you know, if we, I think at this point, we probably should have a meeting with residents and, or at least send out something to them once, you know, and talk about at least the delay, but who amongst them would want to connect if it was available to them? So
We should, we should do that, at least reach out to them.
Exactly, yes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Alright, next we have Timothy Smith loan procedures. So everyone could see the proposed, I guess. Where is it here? The new ones. And then Jackie sent us the old ones, I believe.
Yeah, the history is that we haven't reviewed this policy since, um, two thousand and eight.
It's the only one.
And basically, the town treasurer and the assistant treasurer collector went through a, a deep dive of all the loans that are still available, how many letters they've sent out, how, how many people are sort of ETA unknown or, you know, not known at this point. And so there, we're making a recommendation jointly, Rich and I, in the treasurer's office, that we go ahead and forgive the outstanding loan amounts up to, what did I say? Nineteen.
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen. And then move forward with, we'd like to ask you what your policy might be for moving forward with A, reporting them to collections, there's several issues, several things we'd like answers to. Would you like us to report them to collections? Would you like us to and then in the non-payment section, apply that same rule we have with non-payment of taxes or other bills where we deny beach permits.
Yeah, I thought that was in that policy in two thousand and eight, no?
It was too.
Yeah, I thought it was in that.
How could it, we didn't adopt that in two thousand?
No, when, back when I was on the board and we approved that.
Pay some of the loan, because I need to get a dumpster sticker.
Well, legally now, we have the right to do it. Maybe we did it before and we didn't, I don't know, but we definitely could do it if you want, so.
Yeah, I mean, if I, you know, before, I, I don't know what happened to the list that we had when we did change that policy, because it had been like a six percent interest, and we sort of did an amnesty. We said, anybody comes forward now, in two thousand and eight, you pay your principal off.
No, yeah, forgiven.
We gave like three months or six months to do it. We had a list of, jeez, I want to say thirty, forty people, maybe. Maybe it wasn't that big, it was more than you'd think.
How many do we have now, do we know?
And I don't know, I don't know. And a lot of them came in, but some didn't. And I knew them. Kids at the school, and I'm like, what are you doing? Well, I don't have any money right now, like just buy your kid a car, come on. You know, and so I'm hoping some of those people paid off.
Okay, so we have eleven people.
Eleven.
Those in the way back or those only just twenty fourteen up?
So twenty fourteen up, we have, everyone is
They're current doing fine. So we would have eleven that we wouldn't, not forgiving, we're just calling them uncollectible. Which is very, which is different. So the books don't show that this is an account receivable, it's, it's wiped, it's gone. But they technically still owe. One of the things that I saw in reading it, I mean, I agree fully with you can't get a sticker, et cetera, but I think we should if we have the list, the name, just keep that all the time, even if we call it not collectible. If suddenly, you know, if I owed it, and then suddenly go to get a, try and get a transfer station sticker. Say, sorry, Jerry, you can't get it unless you
Pay your
Pay up. Pay up. And I say that from a point of view of Jerry, that someone who doesn't pay their taxes, someone who doesn't pay back pay back the loan is really taking money away from taxpayers and/or potentially other scholarship recipients because you're reducing the amount of funds that are in that, that account. So I really, I like the, it was in yellow here to add it on, I would add and keep it for, for all of them. I mean, I don't know if that puts a huge burden on treasury, but they, the treasurer, I mean, they don't have to keep going after trying to collect the money because we're going to say it's uncollectible, so pull it off the books, but is that, if, is that a problem to?
I think what they want to do, Jerry, is to pull it off the books and stop trying to.
Trying to get it, yes.
Effort of sending out letters and sending out statements, and that's what they do not want to do.
I agree, I don't, I agree with that. I, I don't have any problem with that.
So we can kind of focus on the ones that, we have promissory notes signed by parents after two and, two thousand and fourteen. So we have mechanisms in place now that we didn't.
Co-signers before that?
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, yeah. I'm almost, this, this one, now this one, people are going to throw things at me for, but if you're delinquent, if we're ready to, to say these are uncollectible, we should publicize who owes it. So that the, and that's tough.
We, we did it before.
I don't know if that's something you want to do, which is why I just raise it as something to discuss.
Pockets or like in the newspaper?
Oh, God.
No, not in the newspaper. I think they were in our packets.
Headline in the newspaper, no.
I'm pretty sure we put them in the packets before.
I mean, I don't know how, I don't, I think.
We get a portion of it only then.
Is, how much principal is owed, do you know?
Um, I don't know, principal and interest is thirty five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
That's of all eleven people?
Of all of them.
Of the people prior to twenty fourteen?
Correct.
Are the people who still live in town?
I don't think there are many in that list, but there might be a couple.
That still live in town? Okay.
Yeah, reading it looked like some do.
I would, I don't like the idea of publicizing, I, I don't like the idea either of a credit, you know, filing that, but I think I would prefer that over the public process. I guess, if I had to choose one of those two.
I mean, go to a collection agency, is that what you're?
I'm sorry, go to a collection agency over the public printing. Yeah.
But like, just like, uh, people who are delinquent on their taxes, that's public knowledge, right?
Right.
We do publish that.
Right, but we are, and we have a legal right to, to do certain things so that we don't have a thirty year gap.
Right.
Or we're not trying to collect something that's twenty years old. So it's, it's a different situation, but it, it's a far more serious situation, and we treat it that way.
I mean, it's really not fair to the people, like Suzanne paid hers off, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean.
It took a while.
Well, and I have had people, you know, I've been doing this for a while, I've had people who, not only I approved their loan back when they applied for it, they've paid it off, and we send letters to people, you know, paying it off.
Do you have thoughts, Suzanne, having gone through this process?
Um, it would have been a lot easier for me to pay it off if I was able to pay it online. That was, for sure, a hurdle, and then someone was like, well, you can just mail us checks. I was like, okay, I was like, in my twenties, I was like, I don't.
Have a check.
Like, I do now, but I'm like, then I have to write the check, and I have to buy envelopes, I have to buy stamps, and I have to go to the post office, I have to.
We all used to have to do that.
I know, but I'm just saying.
In nineteen seventy.
Got rid of the horses a few years ago.
Set it up on auto pay. I would have set it up on auto pay.
Right, I mean, you know, the thing is, the people taking out the loans now aren't using our, the standard that we're used to, they're using a different standard, and the new standard is that, it's auto pay, it's, you know.
You can do that through, I mean, you can do it through your bank, just have them send a check to the town. You know, most.
Yeah, well, I, I also haven't done that. I'm somewhere in the.
No, 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 you're, you're not the problem here, Suzanne.
Fair though, because I mean, yeah.
Let's, but that's, I'm, if we do that, we need to talk to MAA, and we need to talk to IT, and we need to figure out if we can even do that.
Right, right. I understand that there's a barrier there. Um, I, I don't know, I'm not necessarily super into it being uh, sent to a
Collections.
The collections are like the credit bureau, because the likelihood that they already are in like.
Having compromised credit issues already.
Is that gonna do, like, what's the benefit? There.
It's not what we're recommending.
Yeah, so, um, I'm, I think the, if the families are still in town, not being able to get a beach sticker or a dump sticker is motivating
Yes.
to pay the thing back, or at least engage in the process.
So leave them, as Jerry said, as uncollected.
The problem is, you're assuming that these people live in town and own real estate.
Yeah.
Well, but they have a name, and their name is attached, so if they come to get a sticker, even if they.
They rent, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we know how many live in town?
I mean, I, I had the list, I don't have it in front.
Are we still talking about the people prior to?
Because everybody else is.
Twenty fourteen.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
I think post two four, two thousand and fourteen, we have co-signers, we have the promissory notes, we have, um, the ability to take away, you know, to deny permits and all that sort of stickers, licenses.
Well, let me just jump in with a, I hope no one throws anything at me either, Jerry. So the whole idea, I think, is to get the money back. But now, we don't think it's going to happen with this certain eleven, group of eleven people. So I, I would think that there's the threat of these things is really what we want to do. The threat of going to a credit bureau, that, and I know this isn't what you're recommending, but the threat of publishing your name in the paper or whatever, that's the, uh, that's the driver to get somebody to pay something if they knew that was happening, right? Now, these people, this is all before two thousand and fourteen. These people are at least all in their thirties. I mean, they're, they're adults, and they should pay the money. And so I, I kind of think that we should be doing whatever we can to, um, make sure this, we either get the money, or we I don't want to say punish, but there are, there are consequences to not paying the money.
I understand. So let me find out how many people, we know where they are, and they live in Eastham, because if it's like two people, that's easier than if it's eleven people.
Right.
And I don't think so. I think a lot of them, we cannot find.
Case then I could see.
I mean, after someone gets twenty two letters with threats, I mean, where do we go from there, other than?
Well, you go to the credit bureau, and you pu- publish their name in whatever you think is appropriate, and you write it off.
All right, so we'll well, can we revisit this then?
Yeah, but there were, you had another proposal.
But there's more things, if you can decide on that. I mean, the, the ba, the good news is, the, uh, the fund is robust.
Right.
It's at the top.
Well, we want to keep it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and people are paying it back, and they do appreciate the assistance, but what, what uh, MAA is recommending right now is that we go down to zero percent interest, because we are not trying to make money, we're just trying to get the repayment back. So if we're trying to do someone a solid, which, and encourage education, then let's just do that and do zero percent interest for now. And then she can make a recommendation once a year to you if it looks like, you know, we need to change that.
I'm, I'm all in favor of that. I think this is encouragement. I mean, the only reason I think I was saying things, these people didn't pay, but zero, we want to help our residents to further their education, however, wherever it goes.
Yeah. And I'll talk to her about the amnesty thing too. I think we've offered that before, but I will, I will.
Because that, that got a lot of people to pay it off.
And then one more thing, the highlighted yellow, it seems like you're saying that you do agree with the if they haven't paid the loan and they live in Eastham, they get denied those extra.
Yes, yes.
All right, good.
Jamie?
Um, good question, and when someone receives the Timothy Smith loan, does the check go to the individual, or?
No, goes to the school, the institution.
I mean, from my understanding, working with a lot of, um, kids that age, a lot of times when they receive funding, whether it's a scholarship or any of these things, and it goes directly to the school, the school often deducts that from their aid.
That's true.
Sometimes.
Is there a disadvantage to the check going to the individual? Or over the institute as a municipality? Can we, or is that something we can't do, or is there, is there a benefit one way or the other? Because by going to the individual, then that preserves their aid. And actually, instead of just, you know,
Okay.
paying the school, and the school kind of getting the benefit in the long run.
Yeah.
Let the individual get the benefit. It's just some feedback I've heard from students.
No, it's true. I, I, I know. That was surprising to me too, when my daughter did it.
Yeah, you could set up, uh, the, the, the only negative on that I see, Jamie, is that, uh, a check comes to me and I can use, and, and I don't do it, but you can set it up where the tuition's paid, and they show you it's paid, then give the person a check. You'd have to think that, doing that, you'd have, have to set up a uh, just a little procedure to try and make sure it's used appropriately, but I agree with you. One of the things that, I mean, I had that happen to me fifty five years ago, so I mean, it's not something new that when you, you get something from outside, they suddenly deducted off your financial aid, and you, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, they do have to reapply every year if they want to continue with it, so you're always seeing.
Right, you're, you're seeing that, that's right.
Right.
And there's plenty of costs associated with going to school that
Just.
that aren't just tuition. It could be housing or books, books, oh my God.
That's what most of the people list is their reason to help pay for books.
Computer, I mean, you have to have a laptop.
And labs.
And so, I don't, I'm I would be fine also issuing it to the individual, because it's a loan and they have to pay it back, and also, the point is that we give it. And what they do with it is their responsibility. And that's part of the responsibility is entrusting them to because it is really frustrating when you go to try and go to school, and you're like, oh, man, but like, there's money for this, 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 and this, but I need money for like this thing, and there's no like money for that, and so, um, and if they want to abuse what they spend it on, that's
They still have to pay back.
They still have to pay it back.
Right. Right, once they're, a year after, they're not.
Um, yes, yeah. And the, the other thing I promised I would ask is Timothy Smith has always been for undergraduate education and, um, other forms of education. If someone wanted to go to, you know, uh, yeah, any kind of thing like that. We do have a request currently for, uh, postgraduate study.
Oh.
It's a certificate program that the person wants to do, so I didn't know whether you would want to consider that.
Also into it, because having gone through a graduate certificate program and almost completing a master's, trying to find ways to pay for that
Less funding.
is horrible.
Right.
And they're like, oh, do you want five hundred dollars for like twenty hours of your time? And you're like, no, I don't. And most of it's, most of the scholarship stuff is for
Undergraduate.
It's for undergraduate and for teens, and, which is all well and good, but, um, you know, graduate certificate, certificates in particular can be a nice way to get people to have different job skills, so on and so forth. Jerry?
Jackie, is there anything in the organic creation of, of this, uh, loan that says it has to be used for undergraduate education? I mean, do we have any, anything that, that we have to, a hurdle we would have to jump to try and?
Well, if it is, we, then I, we will come back to you and tell you that you can't, but we just looked at the original documents, and they're, it's very interesting. But, um, basically, it wanted to set aside money for people who wanted to continue their education. They, there's also money in the Timothy Smith Fund that goes to the library for library books, so and then the third was to, at Christmas time, was to give to Eastham residents in need. So, so there's actually several categories, and to, um, help out with the repair and maintenance of Town Hall, because of course, he, he gave us this land and built this building. So.
So what about the, uh, the four times? Eligible for loans four times?
Right.
So say they went undergrad and they used it, and then they wanted to go to graduate school?
Oh, then they might not be eligible.
Right.
Is that something in the original document, or was that added?
I don't think so.
So we might have changed that if we allow, okay. Okay.
The last thing we want to do is mess it, mess it up from the original document.
Yeah.
Keep it, keep, keep it there, yeah.
It was really interesting to go back and read those original documents, because there was, I mean, the needy piece was something that. All right, so we'll, I will, um, we'll make some of these changes, and we'll come back with a discussion on the, the remaining.
All right, good.
Loan forgiveness, that's fair.
It has been a while, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was something I've been wanting to mention too about for a while. I keep forgetting to bring up that part of the check, you know.
Yeah, and we're trying to, you know, we have to keep up with our policies every, you have to touch them every once in a while. They get really old. Some of our bylaws that were written thirty years ago are really.
Cringy.
Um, next is Veterans Day. We got a email from Lou Andjar about, just, they're going to honor art. He was always a big supporter of any of the ceremonies we had. He usually spoke at them.
Getting the memorial set up.
That's right. So I may not be in town, so I don't want to commit to being there.
I, I, I'll be there, but I, I had written to Lou, I said, well, if he had asked if a select board person wanted to speak, I said, I spoke at Memorial Day, so a- ask Amy and stuff, but he wrote back and he said that, uh, Jackie said she'd speak, speaking, saying something about art is what he told me, so I, so he's not looking for
Okay.
for us at the moment, I don't think, but, but I'll be there.
It'd be hard for me to speak about art.
It'd be hard for all of us. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we have some committee resignations.
Oh, I gotta write letters.
Uh, Karen Burns from the Affordable Housing Trust and Peter Weston from the Planning Board.
I move, we accept the resignations for, for Karen Burns and Peter West.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And you'll write some nice letters?
I'll write some nice letters.
All right, town managers report.
Um, I had quite a few things, but I think the most important one is the announcement that we have, uh, appointed a deputy fire chief. Um, the job was offered to Eric Littman. He will begin on this week, September thirtieth, so very, very soon. And we'll, I want Chief Albino to bring him by for you to meet in one of your October meetings. We're not sure which one yet, but he's a, a very, very talented, experienced, um, firefighter, EMT, paramedic, who has had, uh, a lot of experience in both small towns and a huge fire department, the Las Vegas Fire Department, uh, city of Las Vegas. He was there during one of the shootings in the hotels that was, so, um, he has a lot of experience. He's also an educator, and he's done, um, fire education for a couple of different universities, and he wants to continue part of that, so he was very excited to be in Eastham. They have already found housing, and he will be with us very shortly. We're excited. And we also have appointed two other firefighters, um, both EMTs, and both going to the academy soon.
Excellent.
All right, um, new agenda items and follow-ups?
Can I ask a question about, comes on the report? In your.
Sure, sure.
The major loot leak in the roof of the library.
Yes.
Um, and. Who's responsible for fixing it because I thought that new roofs. Weren't supposed to leak that soon after being constructed and so, um, I'm curious about.
So this roof is nine years old, so it is not under warranty. I don't believe we can go back to the contractor at this point, um, but I will be. More than honest with you, this project was difficult, it was over budget and behind schedule. Um, the roof had problems almost immediately, we had several, uh, I was responsible for several. Letters and threats back and forth with both the architect and the contractor. The contractor came back twice to try and fix this situation, um. At this point, you know, I'd rather have Scott and John roughly come in and explain to you what the problem is because it's more of a. An actual building, design and building issue, there's a, a, a space in the roof that just. It pitches too badly and it just, there's, despite all the fixing, it hasn't been fixed. So there is no doubt in my mind that we are gonna be, um, asking for capital money to replace this roof.
Or that transition.
Well, we've already replaced the transition, we've done two, one repair, several repairs and then we replaced that whole section. The contractor did, NOS construction did, for free. And it didn't work, so I think, you know.
Yikes.
No doubt about it, it's just been ongoing for at least, yeah, at least five or six years.
Yeah, it was fairly soon after we opened.
Well, that's why I was like, I feel like this was, but my dad on my way here was like, those weird roof lines, man.
Exactly.
Is what he basically said and I was like.
Well, it's pretty and I think with pretty sometimes comes these challenges and I think, um.
It's all in that transition from the, you know, that peak in the corner that goes up. And the two roofs meet that, come down to a valley and then the other roof hits that and, oh man, there's a lot going on right there. So.
But the longer it goes on, the more other issues it's gonna cause, and so it's just not. There comes a point where you have to just call it and say, you know, we can't keep fighting about whose responsibility is or whatever, we just. We have to fix the roof, whatever it takes to fix it, at this point, we have to really fix it and I think it's going, it's not gonna be a repair or patch. It's definitely gonna need something more.
To change something rather major about the whole roof.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Some sorry.
Yeah, well. Is there leaving Google reviews for any of it?
And I'm not saying that there aren't some, perhaps some legal remedies that we can take, I'm just, you know, I'm just being as straight with you as I can be. Um, at this point, we've been arguing over this roof for many, many months.
The insurance, I don't know, maybe. Yeah, okay. Amy?
Hey, um, just ask a quick question too about in the report, um. The after school enrollment, you said is sixty four, do we know, is that up from last year?
Yes, it just maybe by four, it's the peak amount we've ever had and, you know, poor Christine, she always tries to cut it off at fifty.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we, we basically always try and find people to work, it's really about employees and we have to keep a ten to one ratio and. Also the number of littles, I mean, if we have more five year olds, that requires a lot more supervision, so. You know, it's a balancing act, parents desperately need this service, we want to provide it, but we also want children to be safe. And I don't wanna take more children in than we can supervise.
No, that's great, I think it's just, it's, um, important to see that that's a service that's being utilized.
Yeah, and they do, I mean, basically what ends up happening is that everyone gets a slot, some people don't get five days a week. They only get two or they only get three a year, and at least parents can, you know, try and work around that, it's.
They have something they can plan with.
Yeah.
Um, my other question was, is it possible to get, um, I, the numbers for the beach stickers is really great to take a look at. Is there a way to get, and it doesn't need to be a full presentation, but maybe some type of like comparison for the last, for the last year?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's just interesting to just see the trends on things and like where things are growing, what's being utilized.
And also, as you know, the weather, the weather is really important on the beach sticker and the parking, day parking issue too, yeah.
Thank you, thanks for those updates on there.
Suzanne? It's somewhat related, it's to future agenda items and also thinking about the. Enrollment in after school and the childcare voucher that the town offers and the age. That that goes to and if we wanted, if we could consider. Expanding the age.
We already have.
We did.
Did we did?
On the zero.
Is it zero?
Yeah, we did that to zero last year.
Last year. No, 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 it, it was very popular, people took advantage of it.
Zero, which is funny cuz I also went on our website at some point recently and.
I think not say zero, I think it's below two point nine, is how we put it.
No, well, I thought we did child, yeah, zero to two point nine, we do childcare.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then after that's preschool. Um, and we did that because we don't have to pay for lunches anymore cuz the state now pays for lunches and we had school lunch money in there. We had K through twelve lunch before, so.
Awesome, I'm glad we did that, I think I had another thought related to it then, I forget what it was then.
There is another loophole that we've looked at and that's the kids that don't turn six in time to start school. So there's like a gap, sometimes there's a four month gap, sometimes there's longer, so that, that's another one that.
We couldn't pick up, yeah.
We look at if we have money, you know, if we have the funding.
What's the date, is it September thirty?
It's August thirty first.
Thirty one.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, minutes.
I will make a motion to accept the minutes from September ninth.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero, okay, other business, we have. The Historical Society approached us for getting reduced, uh, building permit fees for the. Schoolhouse museum upgrades that are happening, um, with CPA money. Do you wanna touch on it or Eileen's here also?
Eileen, I don't, I, oops, I think there is, uh, uh, no reason why you shouldn't. Uh, reduce these fees, we have done it for other nonprofits be, before in the past. Um, and Justin, our building inspector certainly has no objection to it at all.
So we don't have a number yet, but well, we could, we could authorize Jackie to, uh, work with Justin to give them reduced fees.
Do we each vote on that?
Okay, that would be up to Jackie and Justin's.
The formula, yeah, that it goes through.
All right. So I, I move, we authorize, uh, the town manager to work, to reduce the. The permit fees for the construction at the schoolhouse museum.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Thanks for sitting the whole time, thank you.
I'll meet with Justin as soon as possible.
All right, and any other business?
Uh, we should probably mention, we had a good meeting with Rich this morning.
Oh.
Jenny and I on, uh, some of the alternatives for the.
New fund.
Yeah.
Great.
Helping taxpayers.
Yeah, so I don't think we should.
Some of the guidelines.
The content, but the meeting was very productive.
Yeah, I think we're gonna be presenting to the board.
Great.
Structured format that we were thinking.
Awesome, awesome, thank you both for doing that.
That was, yeah, Rich, yeah, she did a lot of work on that, so, we also appreciate that too.
Yeah.
It's great, all right, our next meeting is Monday, October seventh.
Sounds good.
See you then. Is that next month?
Hit me, yeah, it is.
And Halloween on the Green is the twenty sixth, I saw.
I move, we adjourn.
Okay.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
No discussion?